I call to order the meeting of the Board of, uh, Pasadena Independent School District Board of Trustees in regular session on Tuesday, January 24th, 2023, in the boardroom of the administration building, 1515 Cherry Brook Lane, Pasadena, Texas, at 5:30 PM. Board members present, Mrs. Nelda Sullivan, Mr. Casey Phelan, Mr. Kenny Fernandez, Ms. Crystal Davila, Ms. Paola Fusiliere, and Mr. Marshall Kendrick will be here shortly, and myself, Vicky Morgan. Board members absent at this time is Mr. Marshall Kendrick, but like I say, he's on his way. Let the record indicate that a quorum of board members is present, that this meeting is duly called, and that notice of this meeting was posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. The invocation this evening will be given by Mr. Casey Phelan and the pledges by Ms. Nelda Sullivan. If you would stand, please.
Pray with me, please. Dear heavily most gracious Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for each and every person gathered here. Lord, we ask that you be with us as we go about the business of this school district, to make the decisions that we can for the best interest of the children, the faculty, and staff of this district. Lord, I'd ask that you surround the people that were affected by the weather today, lift them up, make sure that they're safe, get them everything that they need, let them know that they're in our prayers and our thoughts, and we'll do everything that we can for them. It's in your holy and greatest name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Would you please join me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the Texas flag.
Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Let the record indicate that Mr. Marshall Kendrick is now here, and let the record indicate that a quorum of board members is present. This is the, oh, I've already done that. Never mind. We're going to, at this time adjourned to closed session for Senate to Texas Government Code Sections 551.074, for the purpose of considering the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee, or to hear complaints of charges against a public officer or employee unless the individual who's the subject of the deliberation or hearing request of public hearing concerning matters related to the superintendent's recommendation to hire administrative personnel and/or the superintendent's recommendations related to renewals, nonrenewals, and terminations of contract for professional personnel. 551.074, for the purpose of considering matters related to the superintendent's evaluation, superintendent's contract, and related actions. 551, excuse me, point 071, to consult with district's attorneys concerning matters on which the attorney's duty to the, duty to the district under the code of professional responsibility clearly conflicts with the Texas Open Meetings Act, to seek the advice of its attorney about pending or contemplated litigation or a settlement offer, and/or to consider legal advice regarding items specifically listed on the agenda. 551.072, for the purp- purpose of discussing the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property. We will reconvene in open session at 7 o'clock PM. See you then. The board is reconvening in open session. I wonder why there's so many people here in this room. I will never know. Well, we might in a few minutes. Okay, so we're reconvening in open session at 7 o'clock PM, and so Dr. Powell, special recognition.
All right. Well, good evening, and as we should know, 2023 Board Recognition Month is here. It's January. So January is always School Board Recognition Month, but I think every month in PISD is, because we have an awesome school board that's dedicated and committed to this district and the students that we serve. The theme of this year's School Board Recognition Month is Forward Together. This is the theme that Tasby gave us, which highlights the partnership among school leadership, teachers, parents, and community on behalf of our students, and we're truly blessed here in Pasadena ISD to have a board that cares about all students across our district. Our board has consistently supported, I can say this without a doubt, innovative programs which produce the best educational choices and the best educational outcomes. This unwavering dedication to provide these opportunities that cater to the whole student have led us to a long list of accomplishments at the campus level and at the district level. So let's take a moment to watch this short video that shows some of the highlights of the kind words from our students as well.
your support.
Thank you.
They even got a TikTok.
Thank you Pasadena ISD school board.
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 Thank you.
Thank you Pasadena ISD school board.
Thank you Pasadena ISD school board.
Thank you Pasadena ISD school board for everything you do.
For everything you do.
For everything you do.
For everything you do.
Thank you Pasadena ISD school board.
Thank you Pasadena school board.
For all you do.
Thank you Pasadena ISD school board.
We appreciate everything you do.
Thank you Pasadena ISD school board.
So last, I just want to say, this board has a reputation for being selfless and, of course, doing what's right for children in all cases, whether that's, of course, putting hours and hours into reviewing the exciting board books that we send them, or studying the policy that has to be part of our school district, or approving budgets in the good years and in the bad years. They continually look for ways to improve our school district, and they support me and all of the Pasadena ISD stakeholders. So I say thank you. They get paid $0 and 0 cents. No monetary donations or compensation are given to them. They just get the satisfaction of serving such a great community and great students and staff. So be, on behalf of our students and our staff, I want you to join me in applauding and acknowledging our awesome Pasadena ISD school board. I want to say one thing. You know, I saw it there. It said, "Mission accomplished." Mission's not accomplished. You know, the mission continues. You know, this is number 37 for me, but I guarantee you, everything from this point forward will always be poured into the kids. But the mission is never accomplished, and y'all help us accomplish that mission. You're awesome, and that's the reason I'm here.
Well, we have some other friends that are here to, of course, say nice things about our school board and recognize our school board. First, we have a video from Congresswoman Sylvia Garcia's office. They were not able to be here due to some bad weather, as we all know about. Some people in this room know more than others, but we'll go ahead and play the video at this time.
Hi, everyone. It's your neighbor and Congresswoman Sylvia Garcia with a special message in honor of School Board Recognition Month. I wanted to personally thank each school board member from our eight school districts located in Texas 29th District. I know that keeping our schools running smoothly comes with plenty of late nights and a lot of behind-the-scenes work, and you're doing some of the most important work a public servant can do. You're shaping the next generation of leaders by ensuring our schools are places where students can learn, explore, and thrive. For that, I'm truly grateful. We're lucky to have your dedication to our students, teachers, and administrators, because when a child succeeds, we all succeed. I promise to always fight for our public schools and students here in Congress. That's why I supported the American Rescue Plan, which helped our schools fully recover from the pandemic, and I know I can count on you to keep delivering for students right there at home. Thank you for your service, and Happy New Year. Take care, and God bless.
We also have the honor of having Raul Camarillo here from Pasadena Community Liaison with Commissioner Adrian Garcia's office. So if you don't mind coming up, sir, we always like seeing you here at their school board meetings. He's going to share a few words from the commissioner.
Yes, good evening. Good evening, everybody. Good evening, Dr. Powell, and honorable school board trustees. I'm here on behalf of Commissioner Adrian Garcia's office. One thing I always like to share, several of the trustees already heard my speech last year, so I want to go ahead and share it with some of our guests here this evening, is that I'm very proud to be Pasadena ISD involved, because we moved here to Pasadena because of the school district. And my three children all graduated from Pasadena ISD. My oldest from South Houston High School, my middle from Pasadena Memorial, and my baby from Sam Rayburn High School. So you can, it gets interesting in my home sometimes. And I have two grandsons, one in Fred Roberts Middle School and another one in Mill, uh, Millstead Middle School. So I'm very proud that we continue to be part of the Pasadena ISD. Well, today I'm here to make a comment on behalf of the commissioner. He wants to go ahead and celebrate the outstanding work that school boards within precincts do. Specifically, I'm here to acknowledge Pasadena ISD. Commissioners honored to celebrate the trustees for their dedication and commitment to this district's students and schools. Each of you as volunteer school board members, like mentioned, no comp, uh, no pay, you're doing it out of your heart, and, and what you want to do voluntarily for our community, for our children. You, uh, perform the, these critical work, and you're elected to guide Pasadena ISD's strategic plans, create budget, adopt policies, and work closely with Superintendent Dr. Powell and the public. Your leadership and the hard work are critical to the success of our children. As influential advocates for public education, you are responsible for communicating the needs of the school district to the public and the public's expectation to the district. You have set the organizational structure and physical facilities that provide foundation for our school system. I want to pause because I want to make a comment on that statement. Today, we had an emergency weather event, and one of the things that I heard, first thing I heard, that Pasadena ISD implemented their emergency plans, and they, they were able to keep our students and our staff safe at these campuses that were in harm's way today. So I want to commend the work that you do and your staff in keeping our children safe.
Thank you.
Okay, let me, let's see where I left off. Strong school boards are essential to a highly effective public education system. You provide the local governance and oversight that help best serve Pasadena students, their parents, and our local communities. We recognize your commitment to children and the belief that all children can be successful learners, and that the best education is tailored to the individual needs of the child. For all these reasons, Commissioner Garcia urges all citizens to join him in recognizing your dedication and hard work in meeting the needs of today's children and tomorrow's. Commissioner Adrian Garcia honors each of you with a certificate of appreciation, acknowledging your unwavering leadership in public education and continued service to the students of our community. Thank you very much.
And last but not least, we left this for the last, because who would want to follow this? We're going to recognize two outstanding individuals who bring so much joy to our students, especially during the holiday season, and that's Randy and Carla Moody. They can stand up. They're better known in December as Mrs. Claus and Santa Claus. They visited 21 campuses, bringing joy to students, passing out approximately 11,000 candy canes. So let's watch this video, and then we'll bring them up here. I want to make sure they get to see the video that was created. The big kids like Santa, too.
So I told you no one would want to follow that, so we're done with special recognition. We're going to get a quick picture.
Okay. Next on the agenda is public comments according to policy BED Local. These are related to items on the open session portion of the agenda, and at this time, there are no public comments. Moving to the consent agenda, do I hear a motion? Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Phelan. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. Next is the personnel section. I think this room's going to clear out pretty quick. Mr. Phelan.
Madam President, I move that we accept addendum items A, B, and C.
Motion has been made by Mr. Phelan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez, to accept addenda items A, B, and C. All in favor, signify by, oh, any discussion first? All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. Mr. Phelan.
Mr. Gabriel Flores, are you here? There you are. Mr. Flores is being, is here for the position of instructional specialist for, for fine arts. Do you have any family, friends, anybody you'd like to introduce?
My wife is here. My mother and daughter are here as well.
Tell them to stand up. Yep. You're a success story, and we know you're going to do absolutely wonderful things.
Thank you. Welcome to the family. Ms. Allison Posey, there she is. Hello. Ms. Allison is being, is here as a, as the position for special education specialist behavior. Family and friends, there they are.
My wife and Josh, and my two children, Toby and Andrew, they're the same guys.
Awesome. Congratulations.
Welcome back. Yes, ma'am. Excellent. Thank you. And last but surely not least, Mr. Michael Adams. There you are. Michael, family and friends?
My wife, Angela, my youngest son, Kay, my stepmom, Pat, my dad, Wayne, and my sister, Amy. Also, I want to say thank you for the school board and Dr. Powell, leaders here in the audience. Also, an opportunity for me, I look forward to it, and I also want to, my never fam, stand up. I'll stand up. I could not do what I do without them. I'm here because of everybody here this afternoon. One more evident than this afternoon.
Baptism by fire.
Situation there on the campuses, but again, I mean, it's all because of all these people here, so.
Excellent. Well, I went backwards. Mr. Adams is the new principal for Memorial High School.
We certainly congratulate all three of you for your promotions and new positions, and we, at this point in time, since there are a lot of you here that are, were here to hear personnel, you're welcome to leave. We would love for you to stay if you'd like to sit through the rest of the board meeting, but we're going to give you the opportunity to leave at this time and visit with one another quietly. Thank you, and congratulations. I'm going to let them get out.
That is bossy.
Two kids. Absolutely. Okay, guys, we're ready to get started again. Next is consideration and possible approval of amendment to superintendent's contract and related actions.
I move to amend superintendent's contract and related action to discuss in executive session.
Motion by Mr. Kendrick, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. Thank you. We got the best, and we're going to keep her. Consideration, possible approval of the cooperative agreement with Stephen F. Austin State University and Pasadena ISD for clinical teaching placement. Motion by Mr. Fernandez, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. Consideration and possible approval to cooperative agreement with Texas Women's University and Pasadena ISD for clinical teaching placement. Motion by Mr. Fernandez, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. Consideration, possible approval of cooperative agreement with Texas A&amp;M University Commerce and Pasadena ISD for clinical teaching placement. Motion again by Mr. Fernandez, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. Moving to certified personnel and support personnel. Both of these are for information only. Let's move to the educational section. We have a spotlight, and it's always an honor for us to see Donna Summer. She always does a great job at doing our spotlight, and we welcome you to the microphone.
Thank you. I also want to say thank you so much to the board. I definitely can speak on behalf of a few students who've graduated around here that would not be who they are without you, and a lot of staff members that without your encouragement would not have been courageous and moved into roles that they're in now. So on behalf of them and on behalf of me, I'd like to say thank you very much from the bottom of my heart. Good evening. This evening, we are simply fulfilling the requirement of Texas Education Code 39.362 to hold a public hearing related to our annual performance report. Also, per the TEC code, and thanks to Bruce Stone and the Communications Department, the report will be posted publicly in two weeks on the Pasadena ISD website under Required Postings for Accountability, and it must include the following components: PDFs of the Texas Academic Progress Report as distributed by the Texas Education Agency, which also includes the district's special education determination status, and links to financial actual reports; accreditation status, Campus Improvement Plan, Performance Objective, Violent or Criminal Offense Summary, Student Performance in Post-Secondary Institutions, Progress Towards Meeting House Bill III Goals, and links, again, to the 2020-2021 actual financial reports. I just wanted to show everyone here where you can access this, these reports at any time. Bruce is very gracious, and as soon as TA sends me anything that's updated, he updates these links, so they pretty much are as up to date as they can be. Of course, TA is almost always a year behind, so what you're hearing in spotlights throughout the year is definitely more relevant and current, but if you go to Required Postings, there's an Accountability Section, and in that section, the annual report, the entire PDF is item one. Then we have our TAPRs, the Accountability Summary, Accreditation, School Report Cards, the Campus Improvement Plan, District Improvement Plan, Federal Report Cards, then our Texas Public Higher Ed Enrollment, and an overview of the state accountability system. And again, those are updated, and also this month, campuses will be making sure that their school report cards and their federal report cards are posted on their websites as well, per TA requirement. And while most of the report components have already been discussed from the 21-22 school year, I always like to highlight just a few for fun. So I thought to begin, this is the first TA report that reflects the early college high school graduating data from all five comprehensive high schools. So that is all in there now, and as such, we have seen that the students earning dual-course credits more than doubled, from 10% of the student population to 21%, and the percent of students receiving an associate's degree grew from 2%, which was just Pasadena High School, to 9% now that we have all five in there. So congratulations to everyone and to the board for supporting that initiative. On the other end of the grade level spectrum, the beginning-of-the-year kindergarten literacy assessments, we administer those every year, and they are still indicating that Pasadena students who have attended public PK perform better and are more ready for kindergarten than those who don't by a than those who don't, by a difference of 30% on assessments, so it's huge, very huge. In relation to staff retention, the average years of experience for our campus leaders is at least two years more than that beyond the state average, and our teacher turnover rate is 4% lower than the state. So just a few points to highlight in addition to all the spotlights. Does the board have any questions for me about the location or the content of the 2021-2022 report?
So moved.
All right. Do any attendees have questions? This is a public hearing. No, really? Okay. Again, I thank you for your time and for your support.
Thank you, Donna.
Appreciate it.
Okay, consideration and possible approval, let's see, this is Designating Staff Development Waiver Days for the 2022-2023 school year. Pardon? Okay, I thought that I'd done number two. I'm sorry, thank you. Okay, consideration and possible approval of the state-approved Innovative Course Retail Management for 2023-2024 to be offered by all Pasadena ISD high schools.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fernandez, seconded by Ms. Sullivan, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of Designating Staff Development Waiver Days for the 2022-2023 school year. Motion by Mr. Fernandez, seconded by Ms. Sullivan, discussion?
So I know this may be weird that we're bringing this now, but TA changed their rules. Just approving the calendar was not enough, so we had to provide them a board meeting where you approve the waiver days as well, so we'll make sure for this coming calendar. We'll do that in a timely manner.
Any questions, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of the 2023-2024 Academic Calendar and Designation of Waiver Days for Professional Development.
So moved.
Was that you, Mr. Kendrick?
Phelan.
Or Mr. Phelan, okay. Motion by Mr. Phelan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez, any discussion?
Boy, we had a lot of feedback. We had the most responses we've ever had, with over 6,000 coming in.
Wow.
When we posted this, so we didn't go totally to a fall and an additional break after the Christmas holidays, but we did add in some days as requested by students, staff, and community and parents. So it's a little bit of a change-up. We've got a little more prep time going into the school year, but this was vetted through not only those surveys, but through DEC, through principal groups, cabinet as well, and so we're bringing it to you tonight.
Do I hear any discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of general waivers from the Texas Virtual School Network Course Review Process for Pasadena Virtual School Courses.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fernandez, seconded by Ms. Sullivan, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of career and technical education students to participate in national competitions.
So moved.
Okay, who was that? Was that you?
Marshall.
Okay, Marshall, a motion by Mr. Kendrick, seconded by Mr. Fernandez, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. Consideration and possible approval for students and faculty from Pasadena High School to travel to and from Washington DC and New York City for educational and experiential reasons... okay, reasons during spring break of 2024.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fernandez, seconded by Ms. Sullivan, discussion? Yeah. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of the 2022-2023 Texas Department of Ag National School Lunch Program Equipment Grant in the amount of $55,744.
So moved.
Second.
That was you, Mr. Phelan? Thank you. Motion by Mr. Phelan, seconded by Ms. Sullivan, discussion? Hearing... Go ahead.
This is a grant.
Yes.
This board book is full of grants, and we just are able to do so much more for our students because of the work that's carried on by the Grants Department.
Absolutely, and we are pleased to announce this will not be the last you'll see. They have future grants coming and future board meetings, so there's some big ones in here and some small ones, and there's some surprises coming along the way, but yes, we're getting a tilt skillet and a convection steamer. I don't know what a tilt skillet is, but I am super excited about wanting to get one.
Y'all are awesome. You do a great job for our kids. Thank you.
I want to see that tilt skillet when it gets here.
Is that like a Blackstone, or is that like a Blackstone?
It's an amazing piece of equipment. It's wide, you can boil in it, you can do burgers in it, you can do chili in it. It's like this wide, this long, and you can just get...
We need to see that firsthand.
Yeah. Go ahead, Teddy.
When that department gets finished.
Sounds good. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of the Silent Panic Alert Technology Grant in the amount of $127,612.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Kendrick, seconded by Ms. Sullivan, discussion? It was by Mr. Phelan, seconded by Ms. Sullivan, sorry. Y'all sound alike.
We're at the same end of the table.
Okay, any questions, discussion?
So I don't know if you want to explain that, Derek, or if you want...
Good evening, everyone. So the state put out, it's actually two grants that they put out that includes this terminology, so we're still trying to get clarification, but this first one, for the lesser amount, they're basically requiring schools to have a means for staff members to send an alert throughout the campus, so everyone knows there's an issue. We currently already do that at Pasadena ISD with our Raptor Alert System that we have, so this funding will go just to finance that for the limited amount of time that it covers.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Did that answer yours?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
So all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of the Bullet Resistance Shield Grant Program in the amount of $172,277.25.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, was that you, Mr. Kendrick, or... Okay, I'm just checking. Motion by Mr. Kendrick, seconded by Ms. Sullivan, any discussion? Okay, go ahead.
Derek, I read this several times. This is a shield that the police officers are going to have.
And Captain McManon's here. He's our expert in this area, so the police officers will have that. All officers are just...
I think there's 25 or something.
He's coming up. They've had a busy day, like everybody. They were running.
Good evening. It's actually, it had various training stipulations, so we had 23 officers that had been... that was in compliance with the training. Some of the ones had been outside of that window but still had the training, so the 24-month was the stipulation of how many we could buy, so we were buying 23. So, and they are rifle-rated.
Well, that's good.
Rifle-rated.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Stay up here for just a second. Make sure that nobody else has any questions. Any other questions, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of the School Based Mental Health Services Grant in the amount of $5,569,695.36. And the associated grant-funded positions.
So moved.
Second.
Was that you, Ms. Fusiliar?
Yes.
Okay. Motion by Ms. Fusiliar, seconded by Mr. Fernandez, any discussion?
So I just want to thank Karen McCarty and Robin Harold, who are here and do such an outstanding job with our Counseling Department, but they did a lot of work with Olivia and her team on this grant, so appreciate that.
And that's awesome.
The grant team is amazing.
They are.
They are, for sure.
Obviously really excited to bring more mental health coverage to our kids. How will these schools be selected, or is that something that...
So we're gonna focus on intermediate schools and our larger elementaries. I don't know if one of you want to come up and just speak at the microphone, Robin, just for the sake of recording. Talk about how we decided where we're gonna put these resources.
Yes, we did have 10 days to make all these decisions, but... So we're like, have we got this? I got everything written out, but what we had planned on were 10 support counselors, so most of this is for the salaries, and we looked at our highest enrollment. So we have, right now, CIS, we have a partnership with CIS for CIS crisis at the high schools, so we didn't look at the high schools necessarily, so we looked at our high enrollment intermediates, so we have five going to intermediates, and then we did... Part of the grant was to lower your student counselor ratio, and so right now, we have elementaries, like one counselor with 800 kids, so we picked four elementaries, and then we wrote in one for our non... our non... not our comprehensive high schools, so like maybe the Teglars or the Community Schools or CTHS for one for high school.
Great, yes, thank you so much.
Yes, absolutely.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of the Resolution for Pasadena ISD Truancy Intervention and Prevention Project.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Kendrick, was that you? Okay. Motion by Mr. Kendrick, seconded by Ms. Sullivan, discussion?
I have a question.
Yes.
What does truancy prevention look like at other campuses, so if they don't get this grant funding?
So a lot of that work's done by the attendance assistant principal and working with our attendance clerks, as well as counselors and other administrative staff, and teachers join in in this work as well, documenting and calling home and doing home visits. So they're blessed at Pasadena High School in Rayburn to have this position, because the lion's share of that work falls on the staff that are already with their plates full. But of course, we're working through those different systems, counselors, teachers, administrators, working with families, doing attendance contracts. Jamie Burton, her office, do a great job keeping people aware of all the different steps that they have to take to document truancy, and we are hoping and praying that we can get more positions like this to help reach out and work with those families that are struggling.
Great, thank you.
Other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of the Resolution for Pasadena ISD Criminal Justice Grant Program.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fernandez, seconded by Mr. Phelan? Nope, Ms. Sullivan, okay. Boy. Okay, that's enough. I've got the cattle. Yeah, I do. All in... Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of the Resolution for Pasadena ISD Rifle-Resistant Body Armor Grant Program.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Phelan, seconded by Ms. Sullivan, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of the Texas Clean School Bus Program Grant in the amount of $369,000.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fernandez, seconded by Ms. Sullivan, discussion?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
I see Robert out here. Robert, we have any electric buses?
I'll tell you, just a second. Once again, I want to thank the Grants Department as well, because they've helped us quite a bit. This is the third grant we've received in the last year for transportation. If you remember, in February, we received... Last February, we received a grant for a CNG bus, compressed natural gas, and then later in the year, we received another grant for five additional CNG buses, and then this one originally was gonna be a CNG grant, but the manufacturers have switched to where they're now manufacturing. They're switching over, moving towards more electric. They're focusing on electric, and we don't have any electric at this time. There's still a lot of bugs to work out in the electric school bus systems, but we have investigated. In fact, I was supposed to go over to Sci-Fare today and look at a... some electric buses that they had. They had to drive along or whatever, but didn't quite make it over there. Had other things to do today, so I didn't make it over, but we do not... But because the CNG buses are no longer being manufactured, they did allow us to purchase cleaner-burning diesel buses with this particular grant, so... But we don't have electric at this time.
So this is the buses that burn diesel?
Yes, ma'am.
Cleaner manner?
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am. We... What they do is they switch out the older buses that we have that don't burn quite as clean for these new... for these newer buses, that the technology is so much better with... even with diesel than it used to be.
And how many buses are we going to be able to get?
So this... this grant will pay for five buses. It doesn't pay for the full cost. I think the grant is... I think it's roughly about $75,000 to $79,000 a bus. The buses cost us about $129,000, I think, so... But it's a substantial amount of money that we will save on buying new buses as a result.
They cover 80%, right?
Yes, yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's awesome. That's great.
Thank you, Robert.
I just want to make a comment and commend you and your staff for everything that you do. You know, you heard me call this week, and with my son as well, and everything, you know, his bus driver and aide, I kind of want to cry, because they're just so amazing, and I'm so, so thankful for them and for everything that you and your staff do.
Well, thank you. Have a lot of good people over there working with us, yes.
Thank you, Robert.
Thank you.
Any other questions, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. Bring your attention to student achievements and take a minute and look at pages 166 through 171. We have a bunch of students doing wonderful things in the district and representing us well, making us proud, you know, building a future for themselves in all sorts of different areas, and excelling because of their involvement in many of these programs. So don't overlook this. Make sure that you look at this and congratulate these kids when you see them. And Linda, if you would, please let everybody know how much we are... how proud we are and how much we appreciate the hard work that goes into all this.
And if it's under a new format in the board book, this...
Yeah.
Man, I thought it was really easier to really...
It is, it is. Okay, we're gonna move to the Financial section. Consideration and possible approval of budget amendments for November 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez, discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of budget amendments for December 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Phelan, seconded by Ms. Sullivan?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. We're gonna move to the Operations section. Consideration and possible approval of a construction contract with Helles, is that correct? Construction Inc. for the 2022 Bond LED Lights High School Turf Fields Project in the amount of $1,928,105.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fernandez, seconded by Ms. Sullivan, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries.
How'd our fields do today, Kevin?
Pretty wet.
They're not blown away or anything. They're just... Okay, thank you.
Consideration and possible approval of a Design Services Agreement to Texas IBI Group Inc. for the 2022 Bond Program, New Williams Elementary School Replacement Project in the amount of $2... the amount of $2,118,375 and a total project budget of $38 million. That was you, Mr. Kendrick, right? Okay. Motion by Mr. Kendrick, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Discussion?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Are we going to be able to build this new school on the property that we have now? Has that been decided?
So that has been discussed. I know it makes our friends out here nervous. Our friends are Danny Brewster, you know Danny at IBI, and Louis Fernandez. And so we are discussing doing that. But in discussing that, we know we have to have a place for our kids. So we have discussed that as well as a board and a team. But the goal is to build there in the neighborhood on the current site.
It really is needed there. I mean, those, you just see kids come from everywhere. And the Mount Vernon subdivision is revitalizing itself with a lot of young families and young children and had a couple of calls. And so if we can keep it on the site, it, that would be really great for that neighborhood.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Any other discussion or questions?
They like a challenge, right? There you go.
Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of a design services agreement with PBK Architects Inc. for the 2022 Bond Program New Bailey Elementary School Replacement Project in the amount of $2,118,375. If I say it real quick, it doesn't sound like as much. And a total project budget of $38 million. Motion by Mr. Fernandez, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion?
So we have our friends from PBK here as well. Roy Montebolano, I bet I messed that up, Roy, but good to see you again. Ron Bailey and Melissa Capel are here from PBK.
Welcome.
That is Mr. Bailey's, related to the, of course, namesake of Bailey Elementary. So he has quite the story to tell and quite the memorabilia.
Oh, that's awesome.
He shared with Karen at the most recent meeting. So she was super excited to see things she had not even seen. It's many years she's served as principal at Bailey Elementary.
Oh, that's awesome. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of a professional services agreement with West Belt Surveying Inc. for land surveying and subdivision plat preparation services on the New Parks Elementary School Replacement Project in the amount of $18,600. Motion by Mr. Fernandez, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of Allowance Expenditure Authorization, AEA Number 01 for the Building Management Control Systems, BMCS, Upgrades Group One Project in the amount of $61,401. Motion by Mr. Fernandez, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of Allowance Expenditure Authorization, AEA Number 001 for the Guidance Center Conversion to Nutrition Services Project in the credit amount of Mr. Phelan made the motion. Ms. Sullivan seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of Allowance Expenditure Authorization, AEA Number 71 for the New Administration Building Replacement Project in the amount of $80,558. Motion by Mr. Phelan, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of Allowance Expenditure Authorization, AEA Number 72 for the New Administration Building Replacement Project in the credit amount of $215. Motion by Mr. Fernandez, seconded by Mr. Phelan. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. Construction update. And this is for information only. Anyone have any questions they'd like to ask about the construction update? Hearing none. We'll move on to miscellaneous section. Consideration and possible approval of election order and notice for the 2023 Pasadena Independent School District trustee election. Motion by Mr. Phelan? No, Mr. Kendrick, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. Okay. Public comments according to BED Local related to topics not listed on the agenda. And this portion of public comment is for speakers who are addressing topics not listed on tonight's agenda. We ask that all speakers refrain from using profane or vulgar language. Complaints about an individual, student, or employee should seek resolution through the district's grievance process outlined in the applicable Pasadena ISD Board Policy DGBA, FNG, or GF. Along those lines, we ask that speakers respect the privacy rights of others and in doing so, refrain from naming employees and/or students during the public comment portion of the agenda. Titles may be used instead. Remember, this admonition goes for positive or negative comments. Each person will be limited to a maximum of three minutes. Mr. Phelan will be keeping time and will indicate when you have one minute left and then when your time has expired. And tonight, we have one, and that's Ms. Yan Rabey, who will speak on school safety. Ms. Rabey?
I think I should start bringing in a stool. This is a little. Okay. Good evening, board members and superintendent. My name is Yan Rabey. I'm an educator and the schools, in the Houston area, chapter leader of Start School Later, a national organization bringing awareness to chronic teen sleep deprivation when school starts in the early 7 o'clock. In November, I brought to your attention that adolescents do not get enough sleep, who do not get enough sleep are more likely to suffer from mental illness. The American Academy of Pediatrics has recommended that middle and high schools should aim to start no earlier than 8:30 to enable students to get adequate sleep. Recently, I read on Pasadena ISD website and discussions today that the number one priority at Pasadena ISD is the safety and security of students, staff, and community, and that you continuously review your current safety practices and evolve to ensure that you're constantly doing your very best to keep students safe. Well, numerous studies show that there, that students and adolescents looked, excuse me, who do not get enough sleep are more likely to have behavioral problems that can lead to safety issues. For example, a study by Ireland and Colpin examined the link between quantity and quality